Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 9, 2025 Watsonville City Council Meeting. Buenas noches a todos y bienvenidos a la reunion del Consejo Municipal de Watsonville del 9 de septiembre de 2025. Can I please have a roll call?
Clark?
Present.
Dutra?
Here.
Montesino? Parker?
Here.
Gidos Carter?
Here.
Sostito?
Here.
Andarosco?
Here.
We have Cora.
Thank you. And can I get a motion to accuse any absent council members? There, I thought that Montesino was probably just, he'll be right back.
I believe he's in the back.
There's no motion needed. So, item 4.0, Pledge of Allegiance, can I please have our city clerk, Erwin Ortiz, lead us into it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 5.0, Information Items. Disbursement and missed document reports are available for your reference in the agenda packet. And now moving on to 6.0, Presentations and Oral Communications. This time is set aside for members of the general public to address the council on any item not on the council agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented, except that any council member may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of an administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters relating to council will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting or referred to staff for clarification and report. All speakers are asked to fill out a speaker card and leave it at the podium. Speakers are asked to announce their name and district in which they live in in order to obtain an accurate record for the minutes. And before we take comments, I am going to read a quick announcement. Thank you. To use Spanish interpretation devices, obtain one from the table by the interpretation booth. Turn it on and make sure it is on channel E. To use assisted listening, turn on the device to channel A. If you can't hear, check that the device is on. The volume can be adjusted using the arrow buttons, and please return it before you leave. Para usar los aparatos de interpretación en español, obtenga uno la mesa junto a la caseta de interpretación. Prendalo y asegúrese de que esté en el canal E. Para usar la audición asistida, use el canal A. Si no puede oír, revise que el aparato esté encendido. El volumen se puede ajustar usando los botones con flechas. Por favor, regreselo antes de irse. So, with that, we'll move on to item 6.0, Oral Communications from the Public.
Hi, good evening, mayor, council members, city staff. It's good to be here. My name is Jasmine Venegas, and I am PG&E's Government Relations Representative for the Central Coast Division, which includes Santa Cruz County and the city of Watsonville. I am the point of contact for elected officials and staff members. I've had the pleasure of meeting with the mayor and city staff, specifically Administration and Public Works. I've been in my role for under a year. And you've received my emails, but I wanted to come here in person and introduce myself so that you have match a name to a face. As we work together moving forward, please think of me as a resource. If you have questions about anything or need to escalate any issues related to PG&E, I am responsible for finding the information you need and connecting you with the right person at the company. One of the main roles I play is updating you if we have significant power outages that affect your community. You can and should reach out to me for updates in these types of situations, and I'm happy to help. That said, if you have time in the coming months, it would be great to meet one-on-one. You can find my phone number and my email signature. Don't hesitate to reach out, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, buenas tardes, council. Good to see you all. So, I'm here on behalf of Marielena de la Garza, Watsonville native and CEO of Community Action Board. I'm here tonight to thank Mayor Maria for her leadership and support of the critical challenge we launched here at Pajaro Valley, completing the 1,000 Child Care Safety Plans by September 30th. Child Care Safety Plans give families voice and choice in ensuring the care of the children under the age of 18 in case of emergencies, including the threat of deportation. These plans provide peace of mind, dignity, and security for our families. I'm proud to share that cab along with the Pajaro Valley Collaborative, Asset Collaborative, Rotarians, Senderos, the County Office of Education, and PVUSD, who have joined this effort. Together, we have already reached 696 plants, protecting 1,080 local children. A lot. We are deeply grateful for the incredible local response, but we still need like 304 to go. And we need our community to come together with urgency and compassion to reach this goal. Thank you again, Mayor Maria, for accepting this challenge and standing with families to protect what matters most, which is our children. We invite you to go to CAP's webpage, capinc.org, to see the CSP toolkit. That includes training, forms, and also how to report once you complete your plan. So, thank you, Emile Gracias.
Thank you.
Hi, city council. Good evening. My name is Nat with Pajaro Valley for Ethnic Studies and Justice.
Hi, excuse me, could you get the microphone closer?
Okay, it just says don't pull.
That's better, thank you.
Yeah, so I'm with Pajaro Valley for Ethnic Studies and Justice. You'll hear from me later as well, but I want to say two things that are not in the agenda. Firstly, we have currently multiple Watsonville residents who haven't eaten in a week because they are on a hunger strike to protest the harm that pesticides have caused and are causing to our community. Our county has the second highest rate of pediatric cancer in the state, which is 36% higher than the state average. And it's not a surprise that that's the case when an estimated 5,000, over 5,000 acres of carcinogenic pesticides are sprayed in our community every year, including around schools and homes where children spend most of their time. The strikers are asking Driscolls and Cal Giant to transition the fields near our schools to organic. And as city council members, this should be a priority and a no-brainer to step up to say that preventable childhood cancers should be prevented. Please support the strikers, do everything you can to help get Driscolls and Cal Giant, who are headquartered here, to transition their fields to organic. And for those in the audience, I have more info if you're interested. And second, I'm going to keep this short because we wrote you a long letter last month, but please do not appoint Georgia Acosta to any committee or any public service position ever. She is the reason why the PVUSD board is still struggling to regain public trust. She has a long record of unethical behavior. She has shown complete disdain and disrespect for students and constituents, and she has no business being in any position of service. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. Thank you for your attention. I'm here as a concerned community member, a parent, a former educator for PVUSD, a current educator for Gabriel College. I'm very concerned for the fact of you taking into account block. I'm very concerned. I wrote, you know, a statement.
If I may, that's an item later in the agenda?
Yes, and in that regards, I wrote a statement for your consideration, a city, yeah?
I want to listen to your comments, but right now we're taking comments only on items, not on the agenda. That's an item that will be out for discussion in a future agenda item later tonight.
Thank you. And with that regards, I would like to write, read out loud what I have wrote. A city that avoids...
You have to do it later. Please respect the protocol. We want to listen to you. I'm going to give you the opportunity to speak on that item, but I ask that you please wait until that item comes up on the agenda.
Okay, will you call me up to be able to read it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Becky Steinbruner. I live in District 2, but I am here to talk with you this evening and urge your council to send a letter in opposition of the Seahawk Battery Energy Storage Plant at 90 Minto Road. It is in county property area or unincorporated area. It is in permitting process. This project would put over 300 metal cargo containers on agricultural land, wiping out the apple orchard, and it would be filled with lithium batteries. If there is a fire, and there will be a fire because there always is, this technology is not safe. It would be lithium ion phosphate, but they're still prone to thermal runaway. And when that happens, it actually releases more toxic gas than this chemistry that was released from the horrible Moss Landing Fire in January. You need to oppose this because the smoke plume will come over Watsonville. The smoke plume filled with hydrogen fluoride toxic gas will come over Watsonville, over the farmland, and you need to oppose it quickly because the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors last month decided to delay their consideration of a county ordinance regarding battery energy storage facilities for a year. The developer, New Leaf Energy, now is saying, "We can't wait. We're going to go to the California Energy Commission," which they are legally allowed to do now, under AB 205, "for an opt-in certification that will completely sidestep all local jurisdiction." You need to be on record and oppose this very quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Brian Peoples. I'm with Trail Now. We're an organization that's been around for 15 years advocating for the coastal trail from Watsonville to Santa Cruz. And I'm here not to talk about the trail or the train. I'm here to talk about Measure D and what's going on that Watsonville's in big trouble because Santa Cruz is trying, and we submitted a letter. It's in the language, we submitted it. And Santa Cruz is trying to take Watsonville's funding to build their coastal trail from segment 8 to 11. They are short $72 million. And they are trying to do a bond against future revenue on Measure D. And this is going to result in Watsonville losing out again. You guys, this city council should oppose any new bond measures for Measure D for the trail in Santa Cruz. Watsonville deserves the money. Don't let Santa Cruz do this to this community, okay? They're using scare tactics about losing what's called the CTC grant funds. It's not true. They can do the optional trail. They are using scare tactics about rail banking. Again, not true. Typically, if you look at the database, it's four to 17 months. On average, it's six and a half months to do the rail banking. Those railroad tracks cannot be used for a train. The trestles can't be used for a train. We need to open it up. They actually have enough money, believe it. I've been dealing with this for 15 years, our organization, to build the trail all the way to Watsonville from Santa Cruz. So, please, please do not allow members of your council on the RTC board to vote to support the bond measure. Do not do that. Force them, don't allow them to take Watsonville money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone's trying to watch the stream, and it's not working, so just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. We are aware.
Yes, thank you. Just one second. I just want to make an announcement. We have been having technical difficulties at this facility for the last couple of months, and unfortunately today, the stream is not working. I do have an alternative method of recording the meeting tonight, which I'm doing right now, so we will do our best to have the video uploaded by noon tomorrow. So, the recording will be available. We just unfortunately cannot stream today. Thank you.
Saludos, Brené Gomez with Milpan, District 1. It's been a while again, right? It's good to see y'all, mayor, council members. I hope you had a good summer. But I'm here to talk about just, you know, road infrastructure, beach access, right? And specifically West Beach. And this is something that I've been tailored, you know, just talking to people and learning about, you know, attending the Vision Zero meetings, right? Attending, trying to understand the strategic plan that's coming up for the county. Attending my first meeting at RTC, right? Just, but I'm really thinking about how can Watsonville have a good, safe pedestrian safety, safe access, walkway, roadway to the beach, right? Down to the dunes. So, I hope that as this conversation continues, right? As departments are developing their plans for the next six years and all those things, I understand that that piece of road, you know, it's like intersects a lot of, a lot of depart, a lot of jurisdictions, right? It's District 2 on the county side, but it's adjacent to Watsonville, right? I know that Coastal Committee and all these things, you know? So, just really encourage this council to think about supporting that idea, that effort when it comes up, you know, and even in your own, in your own right, when you're thinking about Watsonville infrastructure and possession safety, right? And accessible walkways and roadways for the beach for our population, right? That we think about that, you know? That we move that, it's a long, it's a big project, but it's got to start somewhere. I've never heard of anybody talking about that, you know? And recently, I've been hearing more people kind of moving with it, you know? Even it's even with Measure Q also, so anyways, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dr. Barasa, and I'm here because I'm really, really concerned about the kids at PV High. I know that the city is working with them to create that bridge. It needs to be done as soon as possible. It's so dangerous. I don't know if any of you have driven there, but every time I go to pick up my kids, I'm always scared I'm going to hit a kid. There's not enough space. I don't know why this project is taking so long. It should have been done years ago. The school's been there for 20 years. I don't know why this has taken so long. If you guys can do something to speed that up, because I really worry for those kids. We're talking about safety. That's one thing that we can do.
All right. Thank you all for your comments. Now moving on to item 6B, Oral Communications from Council Members. Do we have any council members who have updates tonight? Okay, I do have updates. It's really quick. I'll stick to my two minutes. I believe there's a PowerPoint.
Yes, Mayor Bear with me for a moment.
I guess while that comes up, I can start. I have my notes. So, I joined our community and the PBC at the press conference to affirm our solidarity with immigrant neighbors. I'm grateful for the local organizations providing medical care, food, and essential services to support families during these difficult times. We also hosted a laptop distribution with AT&amp;T Human IT, El Pajaro CDC, and Supervisor Hernandez. It was wonderful to see students from our schools, including the youth center and El Pajaro CDC businesses owners receiving laptops to support their education, businesses, and future opportunities. I encourage our community to join Marielena's challenge. She's the CEO of Community Action Board to register Adels and Santa Cruz County families for a child's safety plan. Preparation is an act of love and responsibility, giving families peace of mind and protection for their children. I was also honored to meet our young entrepreneur at La Misma Taqueria here in Watsonville. I encourage everyone to stop by, support his family's business, and enjoy some delicious food along with their inspiring community spirit. I joined the County of Santa Cruz for the ribbon cutting of the Grand Valley Road Multi-Use Trail Project. This is funded by the Clean California Grant and Measure D. This trail gives residents a safer and healthier way to reach schools, parks, and shops. I also got the opportunity to recognize Dila Banyolos and Martin Guerrero for 37 years of giving back through Moss Mac Inc. or McDonald's. From creating jobs and scholarships to supporting youth and student success, we congratulate them on their 37 years. Our Fire in the Sky Celebration was another wonderful event. I want to thank airport staff, volunteers, and partners and residents for making and keeping this tradition strong. I was also happy to join our unions and working families at the Annual Labor Picnic, a powerful reminder of strength, dignity, and solidarity of working people in our community. We also want to thank Shirley Flores and AAUW for hosting and inspiring events, uplifting women leaders. I was honored to share my story, highlighting our work to advance equity for women and girls, and learn from the journeys of other leaders. And there's a lot more, but I'm out of time. Okay, so moving on to the next item. Report out of closed session.
Good evening. Closed session was had on all the items on the agenda, and there is no reportable action.
Thank you. And now I have a couple of proclamations that I will be presenting tonight. All right. Okay, so the first proclamation I have is recognizing Buena Vista Brewing. Hi, welcome.
Hello.
So, Buena Vista Brewing Company was founded by brothers Chuck and Phil. Began as a family tradition of brewing craft beer inspired by their Latin heritage. Their passion evolved from backyard gatherings to a full-fledged business, blending traditional Mexican flavors into their unique brews. Despite its challenges during the pandemic, they adapted with resilience, hand canning, and delivering their beer to the community. The city proudly honors their cultural contributions and their dedication to uniting people through craft and community. So, thank you so much for serving our community members and for being part of our business community.
Thank you.
Would you like to share a couple of words?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Rosco. On behalf of all of us that worked there at Buena Vista, thank you. Council members, thank you so much. I see faces that also visited, so that's very inspiring. Yeah, we made it now six years since we started, so a lot of challenges for sure. And we're proud to be here in Watsonville. Watsonville has always supported us since we started, so it's an honor. Thank you. 65 Hengui, sweetie, by the airport. We're close to the hospital. 60, 65 Hengui, yeah.
Well, congratulations.
All right, the next proclamation we have is recognizing Watsonville Wetlands Watch. It's all right, we love large groups. So, Watsonville Wetlands Watch was founded in 1991, and it is the Pajaro Valley's first environmental nonprofit dedicated to preserving local wetlands through education, restoration, and community engagement. The organization offers paid job training and leadership programs for youth, empowering the next generation of environmental leaders. Through partnerships with the city, they maintain trails and lead efforts like the Community Forest Project, which has planted over 3,000 trees. Their work enhances environmental health, climate resilience, and quality of life for Watsonville residents of all ages. And so for all of that and so much more that you do, we want to congratulate and recognize you with this proclamation.
See if I can get you all in there.
Okay. Need the mayor in there, too.
Shall I say a couple of words?
I'll be brief, yeah. I just wanted to say, thank you so much for this great award. Our partnership with city staff and city council has been incredibly meaningful to this organization, and our work together has been, in my opinion, very transformative for this community. I think for us, the kind of our north star has been community health and environmental health, and finding ways to restore and transform our community for the benefit of both, and we've done a great job at that. I just want to acknowledge the amazing work that our staff and students do every day, caring for trails, planting trees, restoring wetlands, and fostering the next generation of leaders and young people in our community. It makes our community so much stronger. So, thanks for all that you do and the great partnership with the city.
Thank you. Congratulations. All right, the next proclamation we have is recognizing September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Welcome. Okay, so pediatric cancer remains the leading cause of disease-related deaths of children and families in our community. Jacob's Heart has provided unwavering support to these families for over 27 years, ensuring they have housing, food, transportation, and emotional care during their most difficult times. Their partnership with Uso Patrick Children's Hospital has helped deliver compassionate, family-centered care to Watsonville families. It is vital that we honor the children lost to cancer and recognize the profound impact this disease has on our community. I just want to thank your organization for the amount of work that you do to support children and families here in our Watsonville.
Good evening. I'm Sandy. I'm one of the behavioral health clinicians at Jacob's Heart.
And my name's Ahenis. I'm the family coordinator at Jacob's Heart. And on behalf of Jacob's Heart Children Cancer Support Services and the families we serve, I would sincerely thank the city of Watsonville for recognizing childhood cancer awareness.
This proclamation honors those in treatment, the survivors, the precious children whose lives were cut short. We especially want to hold our buried families in our hearts today. By making this proclamation, Watsonville shows that families are not alone and that their community stands by them. Thank you once again for your passion. Thank you, city council. Thank you, mayor.
All right, we will now move on to item 7.0, Consent Agenda. All items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions that are considered to be routine and will be added upon as one motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the motion. The mayor will allow public input prior to the approval of the consent agenda. At this time, do we have any clarifying questions from council? Council member Dutra?
So, I'm going to, I want to talk about 7D. I don't know if I, if people want me to pull that, or I can just talk about it from here? The airport, okay.
If you have a question, you can ask.
Yeah, I have questions. Are we going to pull any? We can come back to it.
I will be asking to pull item 7L for a community conversation.
Okay, so I guess I'll just ask a question and then on regard to the airport, I know that this is just a preliminary, you know, step in order to kind of... you know, step in order to kind of address the issue of possibly closing the runway. But it is a significant amount of money. It's $271,000 with the potential of, you know, going up to a million dollars if the process is completely finished. And so, um, I guess my question and concern is that, is there any way? What happens if we do this? And, um, you know, at some point during negotiations with, uh, you know, the pilots or whoever's on the other side, we come to an agreement where this kind of becomes void, then, um, then we just wasted almost $300,000. I mean, so I just, I want to make sure that we've exhausted all conversations with them because I think it would be really, um, it wouldn't be fair to the community that if we get to a point through negotiations, and then this point becomes moot, um, that, or we get a decision, you know, we're going down a road thinking we have all the information needed to successfully close the runway and then have the FAA tell us that that's not going to happen, then I feel like we're kind of being wasteful with, you know, city funding. No, that's a question. Have we exhausted all the conversations to make sure that we're not wasting this kind of money?
I'm going to try to answer a complex question that you just posed, particularly because there are many items that we are in conversation with the Watsonville Pilots Association on different things. One is the work that is being done to adopt their general plan, our 2050 general plan. A big lift that I believe is important for the city to do is to adopt the manual for land use around airport areas. And that's not the correct term, but you know what I'm talking about. Like the manual, the Caltrans manual that regulates land use around the airport. That is one track, and that is something that is important for the city to do. I have had great conversations, very positive, with the president of the association about their willingness and our willingness to actually come to the table together to be able to reach agreement on certain elements of adopting the manual that will expedite your process of putting in place a general plan. That's one track. I have also been clear in my meetings with them that as a separate action and not related to the manual, the council made a decision almost two years ago and gave direction to staff to explore the potential closure of the runway. And that's a separate action. So what's in front of you tonight is, is starting the work of the direction that we received from the council. I know it was not a 7-0 vote, but it was a vote of the majority of the council that provided direction to staff to explore the process for which we could consider at a future meeting, closing the runway. That has nothing to do with the manual. However, if at a future point, the council were to decide to close the runway or shorten the runway or do nothing to the runway, that has implications to the land use considerations that will have to be adopted as part of the general plan. So it will require, so it's very complex. But the way I explain it, and I will continue to explain it, is two separate tracks. You can continue negotiations in relation to general plan and adopting of the manual that we should have done and we will do. And in a separate track, have the discussions and explore the merits of the runway as the council directed staff to do, and reach a decision that will then also have to amend the general plan. Long-winded answer, I hope you understand that the way we see it is two tracks.
Yeah, I agree. I think there are two tracks on that. I guess my question is that, let's say that we are, that the city is successful, and they closed the cross runway. And from conversations I've had with you guys, it seems like even through these negotiations doesn't mean that the safety zones will change automatically. So is that, will all that work happen and the safety zones still remain the same?
No, no, no. We have actually, so part of, um, two years have gone by, almost two years have gone by since we got direction, and it's been complex to kind of like really map out the process. We have verified, should you change the runway, whether you shorten it, that threshold, or you eliminate the runway, the safety zones will adjust accordingly.
Okay. So that's not what I was told. I remember.
It's new information.
Oh, it's new information because we specifically talked, and you said, if we shorten the runway, it's not going to change.
I have verified that that is not the case.
That is not the, it will change either, either way. And shortening the runway will be basically free because it will be funded through other funding that will not cost the city any money. So I, I think that like, now that we have this information that it will open up other parts of the city for development, I think it'd be important for us to know that kind of information because maybe, you know, shortening will open up enough space, and it won't be necessary to close it. I mean, I just worry that we have a lot of young people and just people in general who fly, and it's, if they, if the winds change, they depend on that cross runway to land. And it will just cause, you know, it could be, you know, a really, a situation that we don't want to have on our hands.
Council members, Salsido?
So what I think I hear you saying, City Minister Vitas, we don't have to make any of those decisions now. Like this is an exploration of what could happen. We can have a conversation about those two parallel topics later. This is a contract to explore that.
Environmental review of what would it mean to close the runway. However, an option will be to explore what would it mean to shorten it.
But for $271,000, that's my problem. Like, I feel like we should be getting the answers to these other questions first before we make that decision. That's just my opinion.
Well, we, we, I would say the current litigation file requires that the city does engage in SEQA process, and that is why we are doing this.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right. So at this time, before I bring it back for a motion from council, I'll open it up to the public. Okay, do you have a comment? Okay. Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, on the number 7M, the alcohol licenses? I see, and I know you were compiling this, I see there's 126 total for the county. And then there references a table below, and I don't see the table below, at least mine. How many does South County have, and how many does North County have?
It's about 10, I would say.
Out of about 126.
Eight, eight out of the 126 are in Watsonville.
68 in Santa Cruz. Twenty, oh my God, I can't find it. Give me a second.
So it's eight out of 126 for Watsonville.
Correct.
Which limits our, limits all sorts of entertainment, you know.
I just want to say, those are existing licenses that are issued and are being utilized by current establishments that we all enjoy in Santa Cruz County. They're not for grab, they're not available. So should a new restaurant wanted to apply for a license, Santa Cruz County does not have licenses that are available to be obtained from the ABC.
But only eight in the city of Watsonville.
Are, are.
It was the second biggest city in the.
That is correct.
Or possibly by our count sometimes, the largest city in the county of Santa Cruz. We have eight out of 126.
That is correct.
Any other questions?
So, so that's the request, so.
So the request, the request is that the council makes the formal ask to the county to, for the county to initiate a legislated ask to the state to allow more licenses to be able to be issued in our city. Sample proposal that the council could consider tonight is requesting that at least six more licenses be available exclusively for Watsonville in our request. The county might want to request more than six to the state, but at least six to be exclusively used for Watsonville for the next five years. That will provide us an opportunity that anybody that is contemplating open a full-service restaurant with beer, wine, and spirits be able to operate in our city. And I, as I cite an example of a recent restaurant that we've been wanting to.
Like the sports bar at Viar.
Yeah, correct. And that cannot happen because there are not licenses available at this time.
Did you say how much Santa Cruz has? Just out of curiosity.
68.
68. Yeah. They have more hotels than us, too, so I guess it's got to be.
Anyway, this item is an exciting one because it allows the city to do that ask and work with the county to make sure that our legislators get something in time.
Asked for clarification, thank you.
Yeah. And then before I open it up for public comment, I do want to highlight also item, where is it? 7E. I'm glad that we're finally awarding the bid to start energy management for the city-wide LED streetlight installation project. That's really exciting. That means improved lighting for citywide for residents here in Watsonville. So I'm just really happy that that is moving forward. So with that, I'll now open it up for public comment. Again, I plan on removing item 7L for further discussion. But do any members of the public wish to address any of the other items aside from item 7L?
Thank you. Yes, I do. I would like to, first of all, thank council member Dutra for raising questions about item 7D. The $271,000 to do the environmental assessment to close the crosswind runway. This will be a huge mistake. It will be a huge mistake to spend $271,000. It would be a bigger mistake to close the crosswind runway. And here's why. You cannot depend that emergency supplies would be able to get in if that runway is closed because the main runway requires in foggy conditions that the pilots be instrument-rated. Not all of them are in times of emergency. In the 1989 earthquake, pilots from all over came and brought supplies that we were cut off from. Our county was isolated. You cannot cross, you cannot close this runway because it will severely impact, adversely impact this emergency supplies that could come into our county during an emergency. I understand that the Reno, Reno numbers are high for all jurisdictions, and that's what's causing the housing to be put at the end of Buena Vista. There are other places. There's the Big Lot by Crestview at the intersection of Crestview and Freedom that actually makes a lot more sense because it's right on Freedom Boulevard for infrastructure. You can build it higher there. Do not close the crosswind runway. It will be a huge mistake that will bring great suffering to our county in the next disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. So are you gonna, just for, I have a question for you. Are you here to comment on flock cameras?
Yes.
Yes, that's the next item.
Okay, so what does that mean?
It would be 8A on the agenda. So let us move forward with this item, and then I'll open public comment after the presentation from staff.
Okay, so you'll call me up.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So with that, I'll bring it back to council for a motion. Again, I'm asking that AL.
I'll move to approve with eight, or excuse me, 7L pulled.
Yeah.
Second.
Can we get roll call, please?
Clark?
Aye.
Dutra?
Yes, except for no on 7D.
Mondesino?
Yes.
Parker?
No on 7D, yes on all the other ones.
Giroz Carter?
Aye.
Salsido?
Aye.
And Orozco?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. So now moving on to items removed from consent. Item 8.0A, authorize execution of a 24-month order form for the lease of 37 automated license plate readers. And this report would be provided by, okay, interim police chief Rodriguez. Just give us a minute or two as I get ready.
Ready? All right. Good evening, Mayor, council, and community members in attendance tonight. My name is David Rodriguez. I'm the interim police chief for the police department. With me is Captain Donnie Thol, also with the police department. We're here to talk to you all about the use of Flock in Watsonville. And for those of, for those of you in attendance two weeks ago, this might be a little bit of a rerun, so bear with me, please. So our recommendation from the police department, starting off, is the council approves a resolution authorizing the execution of a two-year order form for the lease of 37 automated license plate readers, also known as ALPR cameras, from Flock Group Incorporated, with an amount not to exceed $251,000 from the general fund. Recent statistics show that about 85% of agencies across the country, not just in California, but across the country, are experiencing officer staffing shortages. Additionally, 60, around 65% of the agencies are experiencing not having enough sworn, enough candidates to fill these sworn positions. So combination of not enough. So combination of not enough qualified cabinet, candidates, and not enough staffing. What this is causing us to do is kind of rethink the way we address policing issues, safety issues in our own communities. A big part of this is using technology. So the technology we're here to talk to, talk about tonight is Flock. What Flock does is provide us with a true force multiplier that allows us to solve more crimes. Our current state of Flock is that we've been in, we've been in partnership with Flock since June of 2023, when it was approved by the city council at that time. Currently, our program consists of 20 cameras throughout Watsonville. In the last six months alone, officers have initiated the use of the system on 98 separate calls for service and/or investigations. So that's essentially almost 100 times where an officer was dispatched to a call for service or initiated some kind of investigative, investigation of some sort, whether it's a criminal investigation or, say, a missing person investigation, and they were able to utilize the Flock system on those nearly 100 calls. Additional cameras would help us establish a more effective program in Watsonville, and I'll expand on that a little more as I get through the PowerPoint. So what Flock Safety does for us is it provides us with cameras from fixed locations throughout the city. One of the things that's most valuable, most invaluable about Flock to us is that it's relatively infrastructure-free. What that means is we don't have to dedicate public works time to install cameras on poles or install cameras across the city and repair them as needed. Additionally, we free up IT time because IT doesn't need to stand up servers or have to tackle the issue of protecting the data and backing it up. So really, Flock is a, is a solution that covers all of these things. It's, provides us with 24/7 coverage of all those fixed locations. Whenever we do have a Flock camera that goes down, Flock is responsive to our needs, and they come out and either fix it or replace it if it needs to be replaced so that we can maintain that coverage. Provides us with real-time alerts. So there's alerts like stolen vehicle alerts, there's Amber alerts, there's other type of custom alerts that we can set up as well. And Flock is what it says it is. It's license plate reader technology. There's no hidden facial recognition built into the system, and there's no other hidden features like speed tracking. So we recognize that technology capturing license plates creates some level of, of concern, right? We all want, you know, we all want privacy. So some privacy measures that are already in place that we deploy. All data is owned by Watsonville PD and will never be sold to, sold to private third parties. So we get to decide what we want to do with that data, not Flock. Private Flock customers never have access to government data or hot lists, so a private Flock customer could be a homeowner's association, it could be a local business that stands up their own Flock program, they do not have access to our confidential data. Flock automatically deletes data after 30 days by default. This is all data that is captured, that is not being used for an investigation. So if we're utilizing the data for an investigation, we go in and tag it so that it's saved, and then it's, and then it's protected by the already established retention periods that we have in Watsonville. Other than that, it's gone by 30 days. Only Watsonville PD decides who we share it with, if at all. And I touched on this already as well, but Flock doesn't have facial recognition. And one of the most important, important features is the data is stored and protected at the highest levels.
Can you go back over that last one again? It looks like you give all the answers.
Please continue.
One of the newest product features that Flock has rolled out to California customers is it's recently launched a preventative tool that will block a user who performs an impermissible search from accessing data. So an example of this is like if an officer were to, were to cert, use a search of like ICE or immigration or Border Patrol or any of these kind of flagged keywords, the system would not let you proceed. It would, it would stop you there so you, you couldn't do a further search at that moment. Again, transparency is key in this. Transparency and accountability is key in this. Every search requires a registered ID along with a search reason or a case number. So every user has a registered ID, so we can always go back to that ID and figure out who, who accessed that data. Additionally, there has to be a search reason or a case number input, and that's set up by Flock system. Search, search reason and user number saved indefinitely. So we, we always have the audit trail. If we ever need to go back to see who accessed specific data, we can always go back and see that. WPD has implemented regular audits to ensure proper usage. And our department has published a transparency portal on our website. So what you see on the screen there that's titled transparency portal is actually, if you go onto our website at any given moment, you will see updated numbers there, you will see all of our policies there on the left, and you'll see updated usage numbers on the right. So it always goes back 30 days. Some additional transparency measures that are in place. Or, sorry, some other, some other points just to highlight how, how much we take transparency seriously with this system. In two years of use, since June of 2023, there have been no violations of department policy or state law by our personnel. This is confirmed through audits. Additionally, we have responded to numerous Public Records Act requests and provided data and written responses, also confirming no violations. This is an important point for us in, in terms of the Public Records Act requests. We're not trying to hide anything, so it's imperative that we are forthcoming with the data that we're collecting. Obviously, the confidential data is not released during PRAs, but search reasons and case numbers. And additionally, there's already plans in place to report back to the chief's advisory board. This is something that could be done on a quarterly basis where another entity can also just confirm that we are, we are holding ourselves accountable, and they are also helping us hold ourselves accountable. So not only do we have all those transparency pieces in place, but we have written policy to support it all and actually strengthen transparency and accountability. What you see, that screenshot on the screen, is what any officer or user would see when first logging in. It always pops up, so it's a disclaimer. By accepting, you're agreeing that you will not use any Flock safety technology, either software, hardware, or otherwise, to investigate, interrogate, detain, detect, or arrest persons for immigration enforcement purposes. This is something that our users always see upon login. Some key points from our LPR policy, which can also be accessed on our website at all, at any given moment. LPR should only be used for official law enforcement business only and for nothing else. Training is required prior to access and use. All of our officers have to go through training before they use it so they know what they can and can do, can and cannot do in the system. As I mentioned before, we have regularly, regularly conducted audits. And lastly, CAD incident details, report number and/or case number, and a search reason required for every inquiry. So not only does the Flock system already require a search reason and maybe a case number, we take it a step further with our policy to add another layer of tracking. So we always have to have either a case number or an incident number. This allows us, when we do our audits, if there's any question about how we utilize the information or what happened with the, with that information, we can go back to that report or that CAD incident detail report, and we can see which officers responded, which officers accessed what information, and what was the outcome of that call. This is ju, just a general overview of how it works. Basically, an officer can respond to a call for service or initiate an investigation. From there, if there's a license plate or vehicle description related to the investigation, the officer can conduct a search of the system. At that point, an officer has the opportunity to enter the license plate into a hot list. And finally, if a license plate that's on a hot list is captured, officers will be alerted on their in-car computer and department-issued cell phones. So just want to give an example of how this could all work. In the real world, how it works on a daily basis for our officers. Say an officer goes to a burglary call. Resident comes home, they find that their residence was burglarized. A lot of residents nowadays have some kind of surveillance cameras, possibly the surveillance camera, camera captured a license plate. Great. From that, that point on, an officer can do a quick search of the Flock system with that license plate and determine if that vehicle crossed other Flock cameras and see maybe where that vehicle might have gone. Additionally, for the long-term investigation, officer can enter that license plate into a hot list. So if any other law enforcement that deploys Flock, not just our city, but any other law enforcement agency in California deploy, deploys Flock, they would get that alert on their daily patrols. So that's another opportunity for even another agency, maybe they're not assigned to Watsonville, but they see this hot list, they're able to stop that car and contact us to see if there's further investigation needed, to see if they have a possible suspect of that burglary. So really, it, it allows us to better investigate these crimes, more thoroughly investigate these crimes, and actually collaborate with our law enforcement partners to better investigate. In terms of success and impact in Watsonville, there's been great, great success from the use of Flock. I'll go over, briefly, I'll go over two examples of what Flock can do and what Flock has done for us. The first one is arrest of attempted murder suspect. This was a stabbing that occurred in Monterey County, so it wasn't even Watsonville. However, our officers learned about this stabbing that occurred in a nearby jurisdiction. Our officers were able to get the license plate from, from that agency and put it into our Flock database and put it on our hot list. An officer was alerted that that suspect vehicle crossed paths with one of our Flock cameras and was alerted to the area. That officer was then able to guide the rest of the officers on patrol to that area to search for that suspect vehicle. Thankfully, our officers were able to find that suspect vehicle attempt to pull it over. Once they pulled the car over, it ended up resulting in a short standoff. During that standoff and attempted arrest, that suspect ended up stabbing our police canine. So the police, with the help of the police canine, we were able to apprehend that, that suspect. So that's an example of not necessarily a violent felon or a violent criminal who has already proven the capability to do an attack on someone. Not, not necessarily from our community, but comes into our community, we're able to get alerted to that suspect being here and, and arrest him. Second highlight that I want to point out is a shooting series that occurred throughout Santa Cruz County. This was in multiple jurisdictions. So there, throughout the night, there were four total incidents throughout Santa Cruz, Watsonville, and the county that involved gun violence. The end result was the fourth and final crimes, incident of that crime spree that happened on Second Street in our city where shots were fired into a house. Thankfully, no one was struck during that shooting. However, it's still traumatizing for those people. I'm sure that were in that residence at that time. Over the course of months-long investigation, we're able to piece together this crime spree through the use of Flock together with cellphone GPS data. So with cellphone data, together with Flock, we're able to put this suspect vehicle at the different crime scenes and ultimately be able to hold him responsible for our shooting in Watsonville. Those are just two, two examples of what Flock has done for us in this community. Some other types of investigations that have benefited from the use of Flock. Now, tho, those two, you know, those two examples are violent crime, but it's not only used to address violent crime. It could be used and has been used in hit-and-run traffic collisions. As you can imagine, that could also be a pretty traumatizing experience for you to be run into on the, on, on the, our city streets, and then the suspect take off with no one, no one to hold accountable, while this has been utilized to hold people accountable for those actions. Other types of thefts, I mentioned, like before, I mentioned burglary, talk about commercial thefts. A huge one is stolen vehicles. This is probably one of the most predominant uses of the Flock system is stolen vehicles. For those of us with vehicles, we realize how important those vehicles are to us. They're our common, they're commonly intertwined with our livelihood, right? They get us to work, they're able to get us to important things that we need to get to, get our families to and from places. So our, our vehicles become an important part of our, our family structure. In the past, with stolen vehicle, literally would be a piece of paper that we would be alerted to, called a hot list at that time, and it would have a bunch of license plates with vehicle descriptions on them. We would hand them out to our officers in briefing, and hopefully they would go out and find a needle in a haystack and find that vehicle and be able to return it to the victim. Now with the use of Flock, we're able to get these alerts while our officers are actually out on the streets. What this means for victims of stolen vehicles is that more often than not, they're able to get their vehicle back in one piece, not with pieces missing from the vehicle, not burned up, not missing tires and wheels and, and all that. They're able to get their vehicle back in one piece so they can be able to drive it soon after. Other types of investigations that we utilize Flock on are missing persons investigations, vehicle pursuits. Vehicle pursuits is another huge one. It's a, a, another safety concern for our community. Sometimes when we get in vehicle pursuits, the suspects drive so erratically that it's unsafe for even us to continue chasing them. Now with the plate, we're able to now let that vehicle go at, at that time, if that's what's determined to be the safest thing to do, and use Flock at a later date to conduct follow-up investigation and, and go after that suspect in a safer manner than putting our community at risk. There's some key statistics that I'd like to share with you all. I already touched on this. In the last six months, officers have initiated use of the system on nearly 100 separate calls for service. So without the use of the cameras, that's nearly 100 opportunities that we would not have to utilize this technology in solving those crimes. In the last 30 days, there have been over 2,500 hot list hits. Since implementing the Flock program, stolen vehicles have decreased by 11%, while stolen vehicle recoveries have increased by 8%. So again, I touched on stolen vehicles being an important key in this, in this solution. So we're having less cars stolen and more cars recovered and returned to victims. That, in that time, there are 28 stolen vehicles recovered and returned to their rightful owners. Flock has been utilized in 19 burglary investigations, including nine arrests. Overall, 80 arrests for various crimes are attributed to the use of Flock. And finally, Flock has been utilized in 15 investigations involving gun violence, one of which I shared a little earlier. So why 37? It's a great question. So originally, we, like I stated before, we got this solution implemented June of 2023. solution implemented June of two thousand and twenty-three. Since then, we've been growing with the solution, learning more about it, learning more ways to use it to effectively close cases and investigate cases. So, through that time, we've worked strategically to try to figure out what are the blind spots that we're missing. And that's how we came to the number of forty. However, with forty cameras, we realized that some of these cameras would be on state routes. So, that poses other challenges and other budgetary concerns. That would put us over our already allocated budget, so we had to drop it down to thirty-seven. That's how we get to thirty-seven. And we're not asking for more funding to do this, we're just trying to do it with the, within the amount we're already budgeted. Talked about some blind spots, so ingress and egress, basically entry and exit points from the city. This is where we're most vulnerable because at this time, there are numerous points throughout the city where a crime could happen and a suspect can escape the city without crossing a Flock camera at all. That's a problem when we're trying to utilize this tool to solve crime and investigate. Again, not only, not only the entrance and exit points of the city, but also some critical locations within the city as well. We realize that there's, are places that do not have coverage at this time where we, we're missing great opportunities to solve crimes.
Are all these businesses, places where you're replacing this product? All the businesses that are on your map?
No, 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 sorry, that's just the stock map of
Oh, they have
the city, city limits.
Oh, okay, has nothing to do with this presentation.
Yeah. Great question. Just in, in closing, just want to go over some key takeaways from the Flock program in general. Flock has already been proven to be an effective investigative tool for the past year, past two years. Again, as evidenced by our policy, our commitment to upholding policy and state law and being forthcoming when we get PRAs, PRA requests. Watsonville PD is committed to transparency and accountability. Flock's new product features in conjunction with the department's strong policy ensures data privacy and proper use. And scaling to thirty-seven cameras would provide greater coverage, especially on the edges of the city limits. Again, just going back to the start of the presentation, the recommendation is to prove a resol- a resolution authorizing the execution of a two-year order form for the least of thirty-seven ALPRs not to exceed two hundred and fifty-one thousand. And that's all I have tonight.
All right, thank you so much for the presentation. At this time, I'm gonna bring it to counsel for any clarifying questions. Any questions at this time? Counsel member Ari?
You said that you're staying within the budget allocation that you had, could you explain that a little bit? Because thirty-seven costs more than twenty.
Yes, whatever our department was budgeted for, we're not, we're staying within that budget. We're not ask, we're not coming here asking you to increase our budget at this time so that we can make this project happen. We're staying within our already approved budget.
Okay.
Counsel member Dutra?
Um, I guess this question is towards the contract, and I just want to make sure that if there was any violation of our contract, let's say, you know, from what I understand is that Flock cannot share this information. It's our information, we own this information, we decide who shares it. I know the community probably seems worried that Flock is going to by, by their own authority, release this information. Would we have the ability to cancel the contract immediately upon that, upon something like that?
Yeah, yes, we'd need to give thirty days' notice, but presumably, we could just, e- even if we, the purpose of the notice would be we would stop paying, but presumably, we could just turn off the cameras.
Yes, that's exactly right. We, like you said, the thirty days' notice, but at any time, we could just flip the switch off and then stop collecting that data.
So, if the, if the council gave direction to cancel this contract, then it, we could, there's not going to be any, any issue at that point?
That's correct. The thirty days really just would have to do with how much the city has to pay, but the city could say, turn off the cameras, and that the city could do. We might still have to pay thirty days to Flock for
Well, if they violate, if they violate the contract, then we would have a lawsuit against them, yeah.
Correct, we could sue for breach of contract.
And, and is it clear in our contract that they cannot share our da- our data?
It is, yes.
Very clear, okay.
Counsel member Ari Parker?
That's a good point, because I think a lot of the conversations we've had are in jurisdictions beyond our control at the national level. So, if Flock itself feels, is, what protections do we have as a city? If Flock gets asked questions or handed a subpoena for information at a national level, which includes our region, and do they have to be forthcoming with that information to us that, that they violated their contract with us or, you know, that?
Yeah, I understand, I think I, make sure I understand your question. So, we own the data, right? The city owns the data. So, presumably, the subpoena would come to the city, and then the city would not comply for two reasons. One is SB fifty-four, the California Values Act, and two is the city actually has a policy. The police department has a policy saying that we don't provide information to the federal government for immigration purposes.
I'm very comfortable with what we do.
Right.
But I think the public is uncomfortable with the thought, as we have seen and what it goes on, that, that the federal government or the executive office has decided to do specific things. And, and then, you know, better to do what he wants than ask permission in any way. And how would that affect us and how does that affect Flock in their contract with us? So, h- how long will they lay down and say, no, we're not doing this, we're not doing this until they capitulate?
Yeah, so, I will look to the police to understand, just, you guys gotta let us get through this conversation. To understand sort of the mechanics of literally who can access the data in the system. My understanding is that the city owns the data, the city accesses the data. I, I can't speak to, and SB fifty-four is solid law, it's already been challenged up to the Ninth Circuit. The Ninth Circuit shot down the challenge. I, I, I unfortunately cannot speak to what the future brings, particularly under this federal administration.
No, I was just talking about the protections that we had if that violation occurs.
Right, so it would true, it would be to cancel the contract and sue Flock for breach, but we couldn't necess, assuming that Flock released data, we, I don't know that we could necessarily claw back that data, we could get an injunction, but if the data's out there, the data's out there.
Understand, a violation has to occur, but once the violation occurs, what protection do we have? Which also influences other jurisdictions, right? That Flock has actually handed over that information. I mean, I would assume this is a big issue for Flock at, at a national level. You know, so that they're, they're gonna try to do as much as they can to protect their business model and, and exist. So, I was just wondering what protections in their contract that they have, I mean, we have, for us in our, in that contract with them?
Yeah, again, it would be a breach of the contract, and so our remedy would be to cancel the contract immediately and sue for breach.
Right.
Which is, I think, the only protection we can ever get in a contract.
What could we sue for?
Uh, we can sue for what they have paid us in the last twelve months in the contract, which I don't have that figure off.
Can't sue for damages?
There's a provision there that says that we can't sue for damages. I mean, not to disclose our legal strategy, but I would probably argue that that provision is void if they violate the terms of the contract in that way.
Excellent, okay, all right, thank you.
I have another question.
Sure.
Can you, I don't know who would answer this question or has this information, but can you off of a license plate, figure out someone's documentation status?
Through a license plate, no.
Like, if you pull up a, your license plate, will it be like so-and-so undocumented driver?
No.
So, when you pull up a license plate, you don't know if that person's documented or undocumented?
We don't even know who's driving the vehicle. Have no idea who's, who's driving, it's, all it is is a license plate. So, even from there, there's more work to be done. It's not like it reads a license plate and then it gives you all kinds of information about a person. All it does is give you a license plate and at what point it crossed that specific camera. Now, for us to further investigate, we have to take that license plate, now run it in a different system and see where it's registered to, who's the registered owner. And again, that doesn't even guarantee that that was the driver. So, there's, there's so much more investigating that has to be done just from that license plate.
So, but, yeah, I mean, I guess my question is, is like, is there any way that you will ever know someone's documentation status from just pulling up the driver's license? I mean, there, I'm, uh, the, the
License plate.
License plate.
No.
No, okay. I, because I, I, I sit here, I've been really thinking about it, and if there was an organization that really wanted this information, then what's that stop, to stop them from going to the DMV to get that information? So, I, I just, I, I feel like that, so I didn't know whether or not they actually had the status of the person that was actually that car's tied to, so it sounds like the answer is no, then?
No, no, they don't.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so now I'll open it up for public comment, can I please get a raise of hands who's here to speak on this item? All right, so I'm gonna limit public comment to one minute, because I want to hear what everyone has to say. Let's continue.
Okay, good evening, thank you. So, I had written something, but my phone's out of battery, so I do want to acknowledge in the spirit, thank you for your time. In the spirit of more than fifteen signs that read, get the flock out of here. The questioning of voting for Flock is really, under this political climate, a threat to our community. In the spirit of respect of the community that we serve, we really have to get the input of who we are serving. I work and have worked in communities that include Watsonville, Salinas, Oakland. I work directly within documented families and students who are more concerned about their parents than themselves, who are very worried about surveillance, policing, and getting in trouble. So, I do have more questions about the breakdown of the two hundred and fifty thousand allocation about Flock. I do have more questions than anything about the proposal, and I do request.
Thank you.
Bernie Gomez with Milpa District One. I want to say, I want to talk about disproportionate impact in Watsonville, right? There's a disproportionate impact in poverty in Watsonville, incarceration in Watsonville, and health outcomes in Watsonville. Now, there's gonna be disparity, a disproportionate impact of surveillance in Watsonville. Scotts Valley has no flock, Santa Cruz has eight, Capitola has ten, and you have the audacity to want thirty-seven. You know what I'm saying? Santa Cruz has, it's, it's a city of fifty-six thousand people with the majority of white. Watsonville is fifty-one thousand with the majority of brown, I'm not race baiting, just stating facts. You know what I'm saying? So, the optics is, you know what I'm saying? Do better, bro, you know what I'm saying?
All right, so that was a pretty lengthy presentation, I only have a minute here, I'll make it quick. Hello, I'm a Santa Cruz County resident, and I'm asking you all to get the flock out. It seems like this is a country where we never have enough money for our teachers, healthcare workers, or youth programs, but there always seems to be plenty of funds for more cameras to surveil us and jails to detain us. When the president of our country is a convicted sex offender and a pedophile, why are we spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on companies that are locked in and working to help ICE deport as many workers as possible? We've already seen multiple cases of local law enforcement sharing, sharing Flock data and passwords with Trump's goons, which they can use to terrorize our communities. In June, Cal Matters reported that law enforcement agencies in SoCal shared this sensitive info with federal agencies more than a hundred times during that month. You say there will be accountability, but who are the police accountable to? My question is, who does Flock really serve, the people or the pedophiles?
Hi, Julia Monahan, one of the leaders of Get the Flock Out. I just want to lead by saying this is not about not trusting the police. I'm divorced from a police officer, and I used to take care of a police dog. This is about the tool that's being used. When a gun is used and there's manufacturer's defect, you sue the manufacturer and you don't use that gun. The manufacturer in this case has been caught giving ICE direct access to the data. It's been caught not following the data retention policies that thousands of law enforcement agencies across the country have in their contracts. So, when you say things like, our contract will protect us, and the contractual terms state that we own the data, the reality is that the media is uncovering more ways that Flock is not obeying contracts, not upholding their own policies, and not protecting the privacy and the Fourth Amendment rights of all residents of this country every week. I'd ask the council to spend half an hour perusing the information in the background materials on GetTheFlockOut.org before you vote, thank you.
Hello, City Council, I'm the Chair of the Latino Affairs Commission for the County of Santa Cruz, meaning that I technically represent the interest of all Latin, of the entire Latina community and by extension, the immigrants in the county. I am here because my duties to my constituent require that I stand before you and remind you that if you renew your contract with Flock, you will continue to be in violation of your own sanctuary policy, which states that this city will not collaborate with federal immigration authorities. Flock and other data brokers are part of the ICE and HSI surveillance apparatus. They profit off of selling data, that is the literal business model. You don't think they've already prepared for cities to try to regulate their business model? They know the federal government will come to their defense. When the officer said the data is safe with the highest authority, he should know that the highest authority is the problem. ICE now has access to Israeli spyware sold by Paragon called Graphite, which is targeted spyware that infects a device and bypasses encryption, an even more dangerous tool when paired with the data collected by Flock. I actually have a draft of an order.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Alma, I was born and raised in Watsonville, and I'm studying currently at UC Santa Cruz. My family has been living and working here for four generations now, and I can say with confidence and pride that Watsonville was built by and continues to be built by immigrants. Immigrants like my great-grandparents, my dad, my grandparents, who contribute their labor and love into this community. My question to you all is, how are you recognizing serving and protecting them, your community of migrant residents? For all of you to even consider implementing this technology of surveillance and criminalization is incredibly disrespectful and dangerous for our community of immigrants and our community in general. I would also like to point out that y'all are very quick to give recognition and praise to agribusinesses like Driscoll's, while the people who make Driscoll's run, who give their bodies, labor, and time and lives to the agri-business continue to be targeted by the police and living in fear. What we need now more than ever is solidarity and action, protection, sanctuary, not surveillance. Stand with your community and vote no on Flock.
Hi, Yessenya, District Seven. I just wanted to say that even if we have a policy in place, you're like consciously making the decision to give money to this company that has been shown to break their contracts, and that shows how little you care for our community. Even if we say we have policies in place or the police can decide who to give it to, there's so many examples of sanctuary cities working with ICE in terms, because they're allowed to with the loophole if it's to catch a criminal, right? And they're changing the definition of what being a criminal is to like be as little as possible so they can lock up as many of us. So, that's concerning. Also, it's, I know you guys are staying within budget, but you're now getting more cameras. And when the budget comes up every time, they're always like, we need more money because we have less officers. How about you guys pocket some of this money for now, for later, when you guys are asking for more money, the budget and other ways? This money should be going to youth programs because gangs are starting to recruit younger. And you guys maybe don't know this because your family doesn't deal with it, but mine does. Okay, there's a lot of pressure for youth, and you guys need to fund programs for kids.
Hi, my name is Scott, and my concern is that the intrusion of the state on the public's rights is always is always couched in, under the veil of maintaining public safety. And I don't think we need to look any farther than what's going on with the executive branch of our government and what it's doing in multiple cities around the country by bringing military into these communities. And in fact, Trump recently said that Chicago is about to find out why it is called the Department of War. If that's not a reason to fear government overreach, I don't know what is. Now, I don't have fears that Watsonville PD is going to break its own policy, nor do I think that it's going to go against California policy when it comes to flock. But what I do have a great fear of is them being coerced into having to provide such information on an unconstitutional venture. So I thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Murray. I'm a retired bilingual teacher. And I am here to say that whatever problem we're trying to solve, I don't think it will be solved in this way. I, there have been a recent flurry of articles in the media about how flock has been irresponsible with data. They collect the data, they have it, and it's accessed. I'm gonna read you a couple titles of articles. This was from 404 Media in August of 2025. Title of article, "California Border Patrol Had Access to More Than Eighty Thousand Flock Cameras Nationwide." Sentence from the article, "CBP, California Border Patrol Regularly Searched Flock Automated License Plate Reader Cameras." This was without or with the permission of the police stations that had mounted the cameras or.
Thank you. No. And there's, uh, right now the live stream, right, is down, so we will be uploading a recording Friday tomorrow.
That's right. As a reminder for the public, uh, we are having technical difficulties and we're unable to livestream tonight. But I do have a separate way of recording what is happening tonight, and the commitment is to put it up by noon tomorrow. I apologize.
My name is Kitty Mizano. I'm from District Seven. I'm a retired teacher from PBUSD. And the bottom line is that we are a sanctuary city, and we know that violations are happening. I understand the sincerity of the police department and I respect the police department, but we have to look at what the intention is and what we try to do. And the impact is different when the, when the data is misused. We know that the Supreme Court has just allowed continued incarceration of people in Los Angeles. And we know, I read in the paper as I was waiting here, I read on my phone that San Jose's City Council is considering calling for a ban on masked ICE agents because they're, people are not safe in our city, particularly the most vulnerable ones. And we need to do what we can to protect them.
Thank you.
Karen Osmerson. I mean, I was an elected official for about, not on the city council, but for sixteen years here in Watsonville, the Pottle Valley Unified School District. I'm here against flock too, for the same reasons people have already told you. And I think it's against the Constitution, the Fourth Amendment, which, you know, establishes that you, whatever. You can read the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution. We would be against it, I believe. And, you know, we, we are under an administration that can do whatever they want. I mean, they, they've gone into Los Angeles, they're going into Chicago, they're talking about Baltimore, all these places. They, they, they don't care about the community or what they, what they want to do or not want to do. They come. And they're, they're gonna come. And so I think we, we should be fearful of what can happen. And it wouldn't be particularly the policeman's fault, but it would be what, we, we have no control over it. And, and we're, I, and I believe we're against the Constitution as well. So I, I am totally opposed to having flock here.
Good evening. Bobby Marchassault, District Two. Many of you know I was on the Policing and Social Equity Committee, as well as the PBUSD SRO Pilot Committee. I'm currently on the Chief's Advisory Board as well and saw this presentation a little bit ago. And I'm glad it's on the agenda tonight, to be honest, because back then I had some concerns when I heard about it, and that was before this administration. And I like that it brings awareness to the fact that not only do we not need to go thirty-seven, we need to talk about taking down the twenty. My concern, um, I totally understand why, from a law enforcement perspective, they would want this. I think as a community, though, it's also our job to balance that and ask what kind of community we want to live in. And do we want to live in a surveillance state community? And I don't think that the ends is worth the means, and that's a, a conversation we need to have. And that money could actually go to pay for, I don't know, maybe the SRO that you're charging right now, shamefully, a school district that's gonna lay off teachers. How about we take that money and we contribute there so that we're helping our community? Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Jill Clifton. I'm a resident of Santa Cruz County, and I'm also a member of Get the Flock Out. My, my concerns are not necessarily the integrity of the police, but the integrity of the company that they're working with. Flock has repeatedly breached their contracts. They have let information go that was crucial to people's safety. And, and now with these changes in the, the federal government, as well as like starting to allow the LA Police Department to pull people over and start searching them and things by color or language that they speak. The, the, the safety is already being eroded to put these cameras up and to have this, this kind of surveillance. I also have concerns about the idea that this data is deleted in thirty days. The whole premise of flock is to put all the, of the data together about the car, along with a bunch of identifying information. And so it's not even just really the license plate, it's tracking that car all over the place. And so technically, to delete that information.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Fernanda Jordan. I was born and raised here in Watsonville. I am not a political person at all, but the moment I heard about this, I knew how to come because there are lots of friends and family members who are terrified right now with this administration. And by having this new technology, it's gonna make things worse. I, I trust the WPD absolutely, but I do not trust them. And that is why I think we should, we should just not have this technology at all. It, I don't trust the administration. They can do whatever they want now. They've been doing whatever they want now. And it's time for us to just, it's time for us to just end this.
Hi again. My name is, my name is Nat, Palhoro Valley for Ethnic Studies and Justice. I oppose the renewal of this contractor flock. We are living in a fascist, anti-immigrant state that is disappearing our people using every surveillance tool and data that they can. We already have multiple examples of flock leaking data, and once that data is out, it's out. You can't take it back in, you can't prevent it from being used to harm the community. And you are putting a lot of trust in a privately held corporation that has already been caught violating data protocols. The only way to make sure that surveillance data are not used to help ICE terrorize, kidnap, and deport members of our community is to not collect it at all. It's not worth it. You can sue for damages, but you can't undeport someone. You can't bring someone's father back. You can't undo the trauma of, of tearing families apart. So don't do ISIS dirty work from them and don't be complicit in the terrorizing of your own people in Watsonville.
That's right.
My name is Eli, Santa Cruz County resident, also Palhoro Valley for Ethnic Studies and Justice. Every decision you make here sows the seeds of the future. Your choices can either normalize civil liberties or surveillance. ICE is about to get a budget the size of a military's. Will you really trust the laws of this administration to be humane? Will you give a green flag to surveillance to the administration that kidnapped Kilmar Abrego Garcia? Have you already forgotten? Will you trust the laws to be humane of the administration changing the Department of Defense to the Department of War? International student protesters had to hide in safe houses from ICE. Imagine if there were hundreds of flock cameras that tracked them. Are you really so certain that you won't one day need a safe house? Are you really so sure there's nothing about you that will not one day be undesirable or criminal to this administration? Are you one hundred percent certain this, this data will not be used, used or released to Trump's secret police?
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Santa Cruz County, and I here am also to oppose this order on the flock cameras. Like, uh, the person who said before me, um, it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when. We have countless cases that have already happened. Flock has already shown themselves to be a company that is not trustworthy. And I don't know, there has been countless, countless cases of officers using flock carelessly, including having, like, one of these officers, they had to sign in. And all, all they had to do was have their password, and they shared this password with their colleagues. Were they not allowed to do it? No. But they, they do it, yes. So my issue is, we aren't protected if we take this. We're only protected after, and it's not real protection. It's just protecting yourselves.
Thank you all for your time. In the presentation, I heard that flock is better for our community. I'm here in opposition. Our community already has numerous targets on our backs. Children are terrified for themselves and their parents. These kids will remember who protected their community and their loved ones. According to a flurry of recent news reports, the data from these cameras has been consistently shared with ICE and DHS. I urge you to hear your community, the people you all serve. Please, don't be complicit in ripping families apart. These kids will remember many who are citizens. Many will look at you in the face, many will look this up later. So many people are already scared to go outside. Kids don't go to school. Parents are terrified to go to work every day and survive. I urge you, from the bottom of my heart, I understand the need to protect our community, and I believe you want to. But I don't think you guys have lived in terror.
Hello, Dr. Barras again. I'm a Watsonville resident, and I understand that there's protocols in space, in place, but when have we heard Trump actually respect any of it? They don't. And they're just like, oops, oh, wow, the information, like everybody said, it's already out there. Once it's out, it's like putting, you cannot put toothpaste back in the tube. So that's the first thing. I don't want to give up my civil liberties for a false sense of security. All the data shows that these tools do not improve community safety, but the data also shows that they have been used in violation of people's privacy. The city would be spending a quarter of a million dollars on this, which seems like a huge waste of taxpayer money to me. I'd rather use that money to support the community. And as someone said, there's nothing for kids to do here on the weekends at night. How about we, we use that money for that? And I'll leave you with this quote, is by Benjamin Franklin. Those who give up essential liberties to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety.
Alright, my name is Yessenya Molina. I am here as a local grassroots organizer. I've been working with a group of volunteer community members going to local businesses. We've reached out to about a hundred and twenty-seven as of right now, doing one-on-one trainings on how to protect themselves when ICE comes, right? We have to prepare the community. We've been taking information, signs, examples of judicial warrants so that they know what to look for. So as the community prepares, we ask you, our city council members, to make every decision with our highly vulnerable immigrant community in mind. Please do not put our community at risk by trusting the promises of the very company that will profit from this agreement. Please acknowledge that while current laws and ordinances should prevent the sharing of data with immigration enforcement agencies, any of these, uh, legal protections immigrant communities have today can be thrown out tomorrow, as you've seen just yesterday with what happened, and them allowing racial profiling in our streets. Yeah, don't, don't go through with seven L.
My name is Yuli, and I'm a local educator and caregiver. And I want to note that more flock cameras in our community have a negative impact on the perceived sense of safety in our community. And as you can see, many members are here to say that we are not in favor of flock. When I hear and see our immigrant neighbors fear sending their kids to school or even go to groceries, these cameras were only raised panic and fear. And if caring for our real neighbors is not in your care, I also hear that when we can just turn off the cameras if flock breaches the contract or if they don't follow that, I want you to think of the environmental electronic waste that just having these cameras will create.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Basilio, and I don't know what else there is left to say. I just wanna echo what literally everyone here who has gave public comment has said. Get the flock out. If they come for us in the morning, they will come for you at night. Don't you forget that. Yeah, I'm opposed to this.
Hello, my name's Becky Steinbruner. I'm a resident of Santa Cruz County. I don't, I don't have a problem with the police. I have a big problem with flock. And as people have said, there are many examples of breach of contract on the part of flock. I have seen videos presented by a group called Brave and Free that showed evidence that flock sells their information to a company called Palantir that uses this information against the citizens. There are always hackers that can get this information. So just turn them off. Just turn them off. I saw that there were times when they were used, but how would you have approached these problems without the use of these cameras? I have great faith in you and your staff, and you would have handled it differently. You would have found the people. There are.
Thank you. Thank you.
One minute. I'm eighty-four years old, and I remember McCarthy charging people with being a communist because they went to a party ten years before. And I'm just wondering if when I go to a protest in Watsonville and we wave to the police as they go by with gratitude, is my license plate gonna get collected? And then when Trump decides, he's, he's gotten rid of all of the, all of the brown people, he's gonna come for those of us who don't like him, because we were, and that shows we were at the protest. So I don't think we have to limit this to the immigrants. I think we are all at risk. And I really want you to think deeply about what this means. Thank you so much for your work.
Hello, my name is Eileen Clark Nagoka. I'm a resident of District Six. And by the way, I was watching from home and hoping to comment from home, but the sound wasn't working. And I tried a couple different computers, so it wasn't from my end. But I agree with what's been said here. First of all, I wonder, you know, and I missed the presentation, but why do we need them? It should be the first question. And then the second thing I'd like to say is borrowing from something a friend, Barbara Crum, said is, how did we go from being a sanctuary city to being a surveillance city so quickly? And, uh, yeah, I, I, sorry, I don't know what else has been said, but it just seems like so much surveillance is unnecessary and very frightening since this information has been used against individuals. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I don't see any others, so now I'll bring it back to council for questions or comments. Councilmember Clark?
I'd like to make a motion for something we can, you may, we can open it up for questions and comments. I would like to make a motion to go with the staff recommendation. I'll second.
Do we have any comments or questions? Councilmember Kidos Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I do have some comments. So first of all, I was part of the council when we approved the initial contract for the cameras. I believe it was two years ago. And the world was a very different place two years ago. We did not have the. We did not have the administration that we have now. So that initial approval was in the hopes of trying to fix some of the traffic issues. I know that's not what it is meant for, but I am a student, or I guess I should say I was a student of surveillance studies. So I kind of applied the theory of the Panopticon and surveillance to the cameras in the hopes that we would be able to reduce our pedestrian fatalities. As I said, I am, I did study surveillance studies and I want to bring a few things up. Policy and the law is way, way, way far behind where it needs to be. Our data is being bought, sold and traded. And I want to feel the same energy when we talk about Facebook and TikTok and YouTube and VR and AI. And I want to remind you that when you are not paying for the product, you are the product. Okay, you are the product. So keep the same energy because we are so far behind on where we need to be with stringent laws protecting our data. So that's, that's just something that I wanted to bring up. I will be voting no on this item. Please allow us to continue. You had your time to speak. Please allow us our time to speak. Thank you. Peter Thiel, who has a massive investment in Flock, is a horrible person. And he is, he basically sued a giant media conglomerate to oblivion. They're officially shut down. So we are a little tiny, teeny tiny city. So we, unfortunately, if Peter Thiel wanted to sue us, we would be bankrupt. Tech bros are running our country. That is the truth. I think we all know. And if you don't, that's the truth because as I said before, our data is being bought and sold. I am really, again, we're so late on this, but I'm glad it's picking up momentum. And I really want people to keep the same energy when it comes to all of our online data because it is being bought and sold and they are already tracking us. We are already, everything that you do on your phone, on your computer, it's being recorded. So yeah, I just wanted to mention that. And I think that is it for my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Hi, anyone else? Council member Crystal Sosido?
First, I'd like to thank all of you tonight for coming. I have not seen chambers this full in quite some time and you are all meaningfully participating in our democracy. And it is our job. We, I personally take my constitutional oath very seriously and listening to all of you is part of that process. And I appreciate that you have come and spoken. I also appreciate Chief Rodriguez and his presentation. I don't think there is an answer tonight that everyone will be happy with. Part of my passion and responsibility has nothing to do with the D I S and it was breezed over in your presentation, but it has to do with NACMEC, the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. Part of my work is working with children that have suffered from those types of things. And I am persuaded tonight by the types of crimes that can be solved. If my children were to go missing, I would want this type of tool to be able to be used. And I understand there's concerns. I have asked, I have reviewed the contract that Watsonville Police has with Flock and that the city has with Flock. I have seen and heard about the audits that have occurred. We have not had any violations in the two years that we have had this. And so reviewing everything, I feel satisfied with the presentation and the information. My job is to review the evidence that's in front of me and I have listened and heard all of the evidence. And I have great faith in Watsonville Police to use this tool correctly and effectively. And if they do not use this tool correctly and effectively, or if they breach this in any way, we will be able to terminate this contract and turn the cameras off immediately. And that's the expectation that will be made clear to the, to the chief and to the city manager. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Can you please not do that? We granted everyone the time for you to speak and address council. Now I'm asking council to share their comments. So please, let's be mindful and be respectful. Anyone else before I call a roll call? Okay. So I am, hmm. I have a great deal of respect for our police department and what you do to keep our community safe. I understand that over the course of the past two years, the cameras have helped you in addressing some critical incidents for community safety and, and well-being of the city of Watsonville. However, given the political climate and where we stand now, I'm not sure that I can support this tonight. Again, I, I acknowledge that that the use of the police department has done through these cameras has been effective in, in again, solving some crimes, significant number of crimes. I mean, you just share data with us. But tonight, I just can't, not because it is just not, not because I don't trust you, but because of where we stand at a national level, politically speaking. So with that, there's a roll call.
Clark?
Aye.
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Kidos Carter?
No.
Sosido?
Yes.
And Adrosco?
No.
The motion carries.
Can we please be respectful? Alright, we're gonna take a recess and then we'll come back.
Clark is a Republican!
Federal law supporters!
Federal law supporters!
Who do you attack? Who do you serve?
Who do you serve?
Well, some of them are for elections.
Some of them are.
If I'm here, it's late and I gotta work early.
The meeting's still on, so we have three more items. They're pretty short, so I'm...
I get started. Alright, so moving on to item 9.8, City Manager's Update Report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I have a brief report for you today and I want to start with acknowledgement of how much work has been done in our parks. Our parks crews have really spurs up, like our Ramsey Park pump tract. There are some new shade structures and a fountain in CB Ranch Park. New drinking fountains, new grill that have been placed at French Park. Just definitely a lot of work being done in all our park system, which is great to see and hopefully something that our residents are enjoying. Something that is not too related to the city, but definitely a joy to the city, is our county fair that's starting tomorrow, Wednesday. Wednesday through Sunday. So just kind of like, wanted to make sure I put a plug in for that wonderful community event. Next, this Saturday, we're gonna see a ribbon cutting at Museo Park. Museo has been the home of artist Kathleen Croce with, with her project on mosaics. And they're going to be doing some, some really wonderful vignettes and embellishment to Museo Park. That ribbon cutting is this Saturday at 1:00 PM. So just want to make sure the community knows to stop by and, and see the great work that's being done there. Also, next week on Tuesday, September 16th, we have our Traffic Advisory Committee meeting. I just want to make sure community members that are concerned about traffic safety or want to kind of come and talk to our Public Works Department team about improvements that can make our streets safer. They have that opportunity. It's just, just really an opportunity to dialogue and bring concerns up that can be addressed by our Public Works team. Music in the Plaza continues September 19th is our next Music in the Plaza event and that will be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Bring your chairs, your blanket, or your dancing shoes, whatever fits you best. The Community Health Trust is also holding a ribbon cutting at French Park Community Garden. That's on September 20th at 10:00 AM. And it's just another great way of having partners, volunteers and neighbors come and share a community space in which fresh vegetables and flowers will be grown. As every time, the mayor and I had another opportunity to visit with a local business and just really learn about the legacy and the enthusiasm that business owners have in maintaining their businesses for so, so many years. We visited Wood and Nickel. And if you haven't been there lately, I recommend the chocolate piece that comes with our meal. Right Chief, like we, like Chief Share, he is with me last time we were there, so it's just awesome. We have a short video that highlights the business and our visit. I don't know if there's audio. Yeah, there's audio. I think that's how it shows because it's showing out of our social media. But as you can see, if you're not hungry, you will get hungry. It's just a wonderful meals and one, one of the eaters and yes, me too. It was, it was great to learn the family history, the proud business owner and just really see how it is a family behind this business. So it was, it was a great opportunity to yet meet another person doing the hard work in our city, which is owning and operating your own business. So we thank him for, for being part of our community and we look forward to visiting some more businesses this next month. That concludes my report.
Okay, moving on to item 9B, report regarding, sorry, can't talk. Report Regarding Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan 2025 to update Local Hazard Mitigation Plan 2019. Now I'm not sure who is gonna be providing the report.
Good evening, council. Courtney Lindberg, Director of Public Works and Utilities, just here to introduce and serve as support. So introducing Claire Peabody with the county, Santa Cruz County, to give a presentation on a multi-jurisdictional, which she will explain further and then we will have time for questions.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Claire Peabody. I'm an emergency services analyst with the Santa Cruz County Office of Response, Recovery and Resilience here in partnership with Watsonville City Staff to update the council on a planning process to update our county's first multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, MJHMP for kind of short. And this is a planning partnership that began and officially launched in January of this year, being led by OR3. So just to share a little bit more, hazard mitigation planning is a required process by FEMA every five years to maintain eligibility for some of FEMA's largest mitigation grant program funding buckets. And so locally, we have the county and several local cities who already had local hazard mitigation plans in place. And in late 2023, OR3 decided to apply for grant funding to support the first development of a multi-jurisdictional planning process, which seeks to unify the county, several of our local cities, water districts and other special districts under a single unified plan update. And the goal of this project really is to reduce duplicative plan update costs, to gather partners together on the same page and go through this process together, both to develop this shared understanding of our hazard environment. As we've seen over the last couple of years alone, hazards in Santa Cruz County don't respect jurisdictional boundaries. We have the Paharo River cutting through a city and two counties alone. And so the solutions to mitigate those hazards also have to be multi-jurisdictional by nature. And so with the successful acquisition of that grant from FEMA, this is funded through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We launched this process with partners formally in January of this year. And here before you in September, we're coming towards the end of this process and want to update you on what we've learned so far and also provide a preview of what is to come and, and what you will be approving later on. So along with planning meetings and inviting a large group of stakeholders to the table, this timeline also shows some of our public engagement timeline. Public engagement is required by FEMA for plan updates like this, but it's also an opportunity to go before the public and solicit input on what public hazard concerns are and where the public weighs in on possible mitigation solutions tailored to each of our many hazards locally. So we have an online public survey that closes this Friday, September 12th. It's been open for a couple of months. I think we're at 450 responses, but want to see how many more we can get before the end of the week to again, just solidify this plan and base it in public engagement. We've attended several in-person workshops and also offered the survey in person on paper forms and in English and Spanish. So attended multiple in-person events through this planning period while we work with our consultant to make sure that we're meeting all the FEMA planning requirements associated with this process. Later on in this month, on September 29th, we'll go to public draft. So the public, as well as members of the council and our board, will get the opportunity to view the entirety of the planned draft contents. Then it will go to Cal OES and FEMA for review, hoping for a review period of about three months and it'll come back to you as the council for adoption. So with the multi-jurisdictional plan, what the final product will look like is a large plan covering the entire county and then an annex specific to Watsonville that your staff have provided that input on. So as I mentioned, this is requirement for continued eligibility for FEMA grant programs. It sort of functions, we, we can compare it to capital improvement plans at the local level, but specific to how we are mitigating the risk of repetitive losses over time from hazards. Mentioned just some of the methods that we've used for stakeholder engagement. It also includes one-on-one interviews. In addition to our planned participants, we have a total of 10 participating jurisdictions. We also invite many other organizations and agencies to the table to be a part of this planning process. And also trying to align with other local planning. And also trying to align with other local planning initiatives. We have multiple regional partnerships where we have water districts involved. There's things like Erwim or Integrated Regional Water Management Group. So trying to align and not duplicate efforts and make sure that the actions reflected in this plan are aligned with other local efforts. So these are just some of the questions that we ask in the public survey. Making sure that the hazards profiled in this final plan reflect the public priorities. You can see winds really rose to the top. This is countywide and it's going to differ. We can filter and sort by jurisdictions. So maybe the hazards that Watsonville is concerned with will weight more heavily towards flooding. Or what we've seen in more recent years with our disasters, less on things like coastal hazards. The countywide document includes a total of 10 hazards. And we also let jurisdictions rank and prioritize which ones each of the annexes will focus on. So here are Watsonville's priority hazards. What I noticed is not included is drought. But that also is a chapter you'll see in the final plan. But obviously our county experiences many hazards. Watsonville's annex will focus less on things like coastal hazards and dam failure. So really this planning document, it's a, several cross-cutting challenges that we wanted to highlight. You know, at the county level disaster financing bleeds into every budget season as we still work to recover. Going back to 2017 storm damage. So it's a flavor that touches nearly every county board of supervisors meeting. And decisions on how to allocate limited resources, especially as we work to recover from the massive amounts of damages. We've experienced over the last five years. And in this planning effort, I think we've seen that poses both the barrier to implementing proactive solutions. But also underscores how important it is to identify these strategic investments to try to minimize our damages over time. We're in an evolving funding environment as well as a physical and natural environment. So during this planning effort, we saw the cancellation of BRIC. That's one of FEMA's, FEMA's largest grant programs, building resilient infrastructure in the communities. So the county of Santa Cruz obviously have seen, has seen a large loss of future opportunity taken away. We had a phased grant through BRIC that was slated to bring a lot of wildfire resilience investment to the county, which is no longer on the table. And so with this strong partnership in mind, we're trying to better partner with our cities and local districts. On how to make strategic investments around upcoming measure key funding and Proposition 4, which is going to boost several state grant programs. That we help will fill some of these gaps in this current federal climate. Yeah, and you know, with this plan, just again, that multi-jurisdictional coordination piece. I think the relationships developed, we hope will result in better partnerships down the road as we go to implement this plan. So as I mentioned, we have some upcoming milestones that we want to bring to your attention at the end of September. We'll go to the public draft period of this plan. And looking at an approval with the Cal OES and FEMA stamp of approval. And then Watsonville City Staff will be coming back to the City Council for formal adoption. And it's that formal adoption proceeding that gives you the eligibility requirement for FEMA grants. That's all we have today. And if Courtney, if you have any additional perspective from Watsonville City Staff. But just on behalf of the whole county of Santa Cruz and the OR3 team, we're really grateful for this partnership and opportunity. To work in close partnership with Watsonville City Staff and appreciate all their efforts on this project.
I'll just add one thing, even though I'm sitting up here as Public Works. The staff and departments that participate in this were across all departments, police, fire, community development, parks, Public Works. Oh gosh, I knew once I started listing them, I was gonna leave something out. City Manager's Office, but it's been across the spectrum. So there's been meetings with everyone all together from the county. And then there's been special breakout meetings facilitated specific for Watsonville. And then another great thing is that we're able to go through and make our individual goals that align with our general plan, with our downtown specific plan, with our climate action plan. So it's really good to align us, not just having another standalone plan. But it weaves into everything else that you have seen for long-term strategic planning and aligning us for federal funding. So we're thrilled for this. So we didn't have to do it alone and use all those resources and ask for money to pay for it. We were able to do it collaboratively. This also allows us to partner on future projects better. Because we're going to have the same kind of documentation to be able to align for applications. So I see this as being incredibly helpful for all of us, being successful for securing funding in the future. So it's just that helps a little bit.
Thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions from council? No? Okay, seeing there's none. Do we have any members of the public who wish to address counsel on this item?
Thank you, Becky Steinbruner. Thank you for the presentation. I have attended some of the countywide meetings and also took the survey. And I'm concerned that there is not a wide representation possibly of Watsonville here. Do you have any information about the location or general location geographically of those who took the surveys? I think that's important information. And to the council, I want to also ask that you add in on the hazards. The very real future placement of these lithium ion battery storage facilities. The state of California is pushing this to have, to meet the renewable energy goal by 2045. Santa Cruz County has adopted a goal of 2030 that requires these battery energy storage facilities that are a hazard. I also want to remind your council about the importance of maintaining a very viable airport. Because without that, we will suffer in any hazard coming up in our future. Thank you.
I'm happy to speak to survey demographics and some of our public engagement around this plan. So I don't have the survey demographic breakdown in front of me. But that is something that we'll explore, especially as we approach the end of the survey and can finally compile our results. But our planning committee did make a conceited effort to concentrate some more of our in-person outreach in the Watsonville and surrounding area. So as far as in-person events, I think we had three total in-person events in Watsonville area. And that was a majority of our in-person event attendance. So more recently, you know, the strawberry festival and Watsonville's Earth Day celebration earlier this year. Were both tabled by planning team staff.
Okay, seeing that there's no more speakers, we'll bring it back to council. This is just a report, so there's no action. Okay. So if there's no further questions, then we'll move on to the next item. Thank you for the presentation. All right, 9C fireworks enforcement report by Police Captain Folgony and Battalion Chief Almita. Oh, Antrim, sorry. I'm sorry. I'm reading what's on my report. And on the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, City Manager Vitas, Corey Schaefer, Acting Fire Chief. I'll be presenting in place of Battalion Chief Almita Schaefer, along with Captain Brian Folgony. Before I begin, just wanted to give credit where credit is due. This presentation was prepared by Captain Folgony and B.C. Almita Schaefer. It is our understanding that post 4th of July, council members like to receive a report, which is we consider an after-action review of the incidents around 4th of July. The planning, the leading up to the night itself and what we do afterwards and how we coordinate our efforts. And giving great credit to the Police Department and Fire Department for working collectively to make it a safe 4th of July. And looking at the statistics, yes, we did have fires, some which were related directly to some fireworks, others undetermined. But with that, we'll move forward into our presentation for you. Okay, starting off, the city allows temporary sales of safe and sane fireworks from July 1st to July 4th. The city does profit from the sale of fireworks. They receive permit fees, sales tax of 7% surcharge from the sale of the safe and sane products. The city actually acts as a regulatory agency to process the permitting of the booths. And every year, about 20 nonprofit agencies, youth groups utilize the proceeds of the sale of the fireworks as a fundraising strategy. And as we go out and we're checking the booths for safety and all of the measures that they have in place. We're actually dialoguing with these nonprofits and really getting an impact from them. As to how much these booth sales contribute to whatever their organization, they're actually trying to fund. Whether it's the high schools, youth groups, you name it. They are so appreciative of your efforts and supporting this. We just have to be there to support the safety of it and the enforcement as far as using the safe and sane fireworks independently. And not the ones that lift off the ground. Moving into fire booth inspections. During the booth inspections, our department identified some non-compliance related to the types of extinguishers. And to explain that just a little bit, it wasn't a wrongdoing of the individual booths themselves, but this may be like a misunderstanding. So for example, a business may have borrowed a fire extinguisher from their place of business or school or youth group and used it in their booth. Where we'd have to identify that that actually still needs to be in place during operating hours for their business or group. And that they have to use an independent fire extinguisher for their actual booth and sales. So it was something that we just had to communicate to resolve just a little discrepancy. The company and prior to the company actually does supply fire extinguishers for those that don't have them. And we were able to work with the company and they're really diligent in providing us what was needed. The illegal fireworks. So the concern is the use of illegal fireworks within the city of Watsonville, leading up to, during and after the 4th of July. Illegal fireworks are those that go airborne. They're super loud, they explode. They can cause incipient fires and the ones that go aerial can land on the roofs of houses, which cause residential structure fires, wildfires, all of those things. So we're really trying to limit those fireworks that ill are legal for the safety of people's property. And even the explosive nature in which they could cause to their own self in harming their hands, their body, people around them. Lots of calls and complaints originate from the use of fireworks. It caused stress and anxiety, as you know, for many of our residents, to include the seniors and veterans, as well as their pets. Illegal fireworks are the reason that we need to have special enforcement with both police and fire, working collaboratively to make sure it's safe. And that's where I'll give the mic to Captain Folgony to talk more about the enforcement process of the 4th of July.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. Last year during this presentation, it was provided by Chief Avala and Captain Radic. During that presentation, there was some conversation and some direction about some different efforts that we could try. This year, we did say, take the recommendations and put forth some, some different efforts. Different than the city of Watsonville has done in the past. And I'll speak to those here in a minute. We develop strategic partnerships with our allied agencies to include the Watsonville Fire Department, Cal Fire, CZU, their law enforcement division. To also include the Office of the State Fire Marshal. As mentioned, Watsonville Fire, we coordinate with the Sheriff's Department's Bomb Squad. And also our other street teams that we have in this county, SEACT and SCARE. They're all aware of the type of enforcement actions we were planning to take during this season. This is the biggest change that we had. We created a fireworks investigations unit. We repurposed a sergeant and detective and one officer. To specifically focus on the use and the sale of illegal fireworks in this jurisdiction. This started back in March and they were authorized to deploy on an as-needed basis. And then they were reassigned full-time from June 1st to July 5th. We also deployed drone units. Last year was our first year deploying drones in the community and forced fireworks. We didn't really know what we were doing. Since then, we've grown quite a bit. We have about, we have 10 drone pilots. We've conducted monthly trainings to include nighttime deployments to prepare for these enforcement efforts. We provided proper equipment. We coordinated with other city departments to include IT and GIS to bring mapping capabilities to our drones. So it would make it easier for our drone pilots to identify where these illegal fireworks are coming from. We coordinated with the media team to push out, change our city's website banners. To notify the public where to report illegal fireworks or individuals selling fireworks. We also worked on social media posts to, to let the public know about the $1,000 violations. And also our increased proactive enforcement efforts, specifically the drones. Just to highlight the fireworks investigations unit again, again, it was one WPD sergeant and two WPD officers. They worked from June 1st to July 5th. Now, within this timeframe, they wrote 11 search warrants, 11 residential search warrants not to. That doesn't include the search warrants that they wrote for cell phones and other court documents to conduct these investigations. And recovered prior to about 2,800 pounds of illegal fireworks that were headed to our jurisdiction. They also recovered six firearms during the same investigations and a half kilo of narcotics. To highlight our drone team, on the 4th of July, we deployed four drone pilots, which consisted of two, two teams. So you have a pilot and you have a spotter. And on the 5th, we deployed two drone pilots, which is one team. We strategically placed them throughout the city to, so we could be most effective in the different neighborhoods. They just didn't fly from the police department. They just didn't pull over on any city streets. Because these pilots were going to be dedicated to watching the drones and watching the flights. They, we had some safety concerns there. So one of the places we put them was actually the Paharo Valley HOA building on Bronte to support that neighborhood. Here is a video clip of some drone footage, some actual drone footage that was captured over the 4th of July. It's about a minute long. There's no sound, but this is a good visual representation of what we're experiencing. So that's actually the coordinated efforts from our drone team to our undercover personnel on the street. So over the two days, 11 sites were issued by our drone pilots. Those three were three of them. Okay, calls for service. This first graph here. This first graph here you're seeing is from 2021 to 2025, the calls for service for the We had 101 calls this year for the week that encompassed Fourth of July. That's a 36% reduction in calls. 2025 had the lowest calls for service in the last five years. This is a fire slide, so I'll turn it over to Chief.
Okay, this is a, excuse me. This is a similar graph just showing the calls for service from 6:30 to 7:05, although it is not the lowest year of calls for 2025. It is reduced from the previous year of 131. So this just depicts the week, not the actual single day.
So now, this next graph depicts calls for service on July 4th from 6:00 PM on the 4th to about 6:00 AM on the 5th. And again, 2025 saw, we had 75 calls for service, which was a 31% reduction in calls. Again, the lowest in five years.
And this again shows the Fourth of July actual day, calls for service from what appears to be 6 o'clock until 06:00, and we were at 17 calls for that evening. Couldn't say, can't recall.
All right. Our enforcement totals, on the Fourth of July, we deployed one sergeant, seven officers, and four drone pilots. On the 5th, we deployed one sergeant and three officers, two drone pilots. And these officers that I'm identifying are addition to our normal patrols. In total, we issued 36 citations. 11 of those citations came directly from the drone teams for $41,000 in total fines. In total, we confiscated about 3,000 pounds of fireworks. A majority of that came from our fire enforcement unit, firework enforcement unit. And these are just some quotes that we captured from our social media page, thanking us for the job and identifying the positive work that our officers are doing. I'll open up to any questions.
Councilmember Ari Parker.
Hey, thank you for your report. I have a couple of questions, and I think they're obvious ones, but the deterrent before the Fourth of July, getting in there and finding out either with other agencies across county lines, et cetera, and bringing in fireworks, right? That was way bigger, huger, I hate to use those words, but bigger. Sorry. Yeah, I'm tired, than it was in previous years? Did we get more fireworks before they were even sold than in previous years?
We have never done an enforcement action like this. I don't know if we'll do it again next year.
Oh, yeah.
We may, depending on the direction. But yes, this is actually, the year previous, we actually had one seizure that totaled about 5,000 pounds from a cargo container that was brought in, and we were able to, it was one case that we worked. So I would imagine that we have the opportunity to recover a lot more.
So thank you very much for all the efforts and all the different things that you guys have done for prevention. And I think those stats are wonderful. My district, District 7, I did not hear from people like I normally hear from people. So you're both fire and police, your outreach was good. They felt like you were really paying attention, except for the people, of course, where no fireworks is no fireworks. You can't do it. And fire, you know, we have an, we had an influx of unhoused, and some of them like to light fires. So whether it's Fourth of July or not, too, we appreciate that because I can really, you know, it starts up. But it wasn't, it wasn't like it was, it felt, last year, it felt like war. Because even in the middle of the night, my windows shook, and they were just shooting them off like crazy at all times, not even on the Fourth of July, before that, after that, and it wasn't like that. So I say thank you very much because that was the deterrent. It was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Councilmember Dutra?
So I guess my question is, it says 36 citations, 41,000. What's the breakup between like fire giving and police giving? Who gave, how do we know like what fire gave and what police gave?
It was, that was all PD? I think if you're asking in the issuance of the actual citations. The Police Department does the issuing of all of the citations. What the Fire Department does on the night of the 4th, and predominantly maybe the evening, the two evenings before, is we provide like a presence. So our apparatus and all of our personnel that are on duty are policing the streets, just having an actual physical presence with our apparatus, but not coming off of the engines and issuing citations. That's the Police Department. And then we collaboratively work afterwards with the collection of the citations that come back to the city.
Okay. I mean, people were a lot happier this year. It was, it was huge difference. So thank you.
That's good to hear.
I have a quick question. Out of the 41,000, how much of that have we collected?
That would be a question for finance.
She doesn't know. Okay. Can we find out?
We can find out. You know, often the fire chief or the fire marshal like does hear, have hearings with residents that come and try to appeal the citations. So that process sort of happens right after, so we can get an accounting and let the council know.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions, comments? Yeah, thank you so much for all your work.
You're welcome.
All right. So with that, item 10.8, emergency items added to the agenda, are there any? Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
Hold your comment.
Thank you, Becky Steinbruner. Thank you for the report and for your good work. I do not live in the city of Watsonville, but I'll confess, my family goes to the top of Rampart Road to watch the action in Parro Valley, and it's pretty amazing. But it was less this year. So I have a question about the tracking of the violators. Were they from Watsonville? Were they from other places? Where did they come from? Do you have a record of their license plates? Can you watch them on the flock cameras to see in the future if these same people come back into the area bringing illegal fireworks? I understand that the nonprofits rely on the safe and sane a lot, and I was curious, you said that you talk with them a lot. How much do they make in these endeavors, selling fireworks in the city? And I think that's it. Thank you very much. I'm also curious to hear how much of the $41,000 in fines will be collected and what will be done with that money? Will that go to support more drones next year? What will you do with that fine money? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any comments? Okay. Seeing that there's none, we'll move on to item 10.0, emergency items added to the agenda. Do we have any items from council? Yeah. All right. Any requests on scheduling future agenda items? Yes.
I would like to see two letters written from our council. A letter against battery storage on Minto, and it's a, I know it's a county decision, but those are our resources that are going to respond when things happen, and that's our jurisdiction, that that's going to burn, 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 and come over. So since they didn't ask us for our opinion, or inform us of that till it was all a fait accompli, I'd like to have that, a letter written so that we can vote on supporting that at our next meeting. And the next one is the letter to the RTC. I spoke to Mr. Montesina, who's, you know, in saying that if we're gonna, if we are going to have, I'm just tired of the city of Santa Cruz just eating up our money. We haven't even gotten our bridge to Parro where you can walk or ride a bike across it and prove, they just keep taking the money. And the fact is, if they're going to start something, which they should have done with the rail, they should have started it here and gone that way, gone north. So it would be great to say we would support keeping any other funds in South County to support and go north. And then we can vote on that as a council. Thank you.
I just want to say I totally second that, everything she said. Thank you.
All right. And with that, meeting adjourned at 9:07.